America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, individual, with liberty and justice for all, honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you all very much.
Can I, yeah, that was really gonna be my question that you entered into before we get started. I'm not really understanding exactly why we're here. I talked to Kristen and she did, but I didn't. So, in other words, the court's already taken a vote on the proposed tax rate, so I figured we were just gonna go in and start making, you know, suggestions for cuts or raises or whatever, and we were gonna do that once and be done with it, so I'm not sure why we're doing it today and then doing it again another time if this isn't the record vote. I mean, what, I don't really understand the point of that.
I don't think they're taking the final vote on the tax rate yet, I mean.
No, no.
What you propo, no, right, but normally, normally, if I'm not mistaken, you propose the tax rate, which the court's voted on, then you go have your final budget hearing. I've never done this before since I've been here, having an interim budget vote. This is like an interim vote that doesn't count, kinda.
Well, we, we don't, up to this point, we really...
I guess I'm asking the judge, I know what you said. I apologize, I don't mean to cut off.
No, it's okay.
I know what you explained to me, I'm just asking the judge.
All I'm trying to do today, if you all don't wanna do it, we can adjourn this meeting in five minutes and go fishing. All I'm trying to do today is get some idea of where the court is going on some of these We talked about having a threshold of one and a half cents. If we can have some meaningful discussions today, we may be able to take a hard look at that one and a half cents with some information we're gonna get from Dale and Kristen, and get an indication as we go down this list of whether or not we have general consensus or not. And I will tell you, there's probably, out of an eighty-nine million dollar budget, there's probably a quarter of a million dollars' worth of stuff we could spend all day talking about, and the rest of it's pretty set. But if you all don't want to have those discussions today, we can go home. But I thought it was very meaningful for us to begin to have some direction on where we wanna go with like item number seven, number six, number five. Those are things that sorta help us drive this, but if we're gonna drive down one and a half cents, we're gonna have to have some serious discussions with that. And so it's up to the court. If you don't want to spend any time doing that today, fine, we spent an awful lot of time over the week getting ready for this, but we don't have to do that.
I agree, Judge, with what you're saying. I mean, I think, you know, we owe it to the taxpayers and to ourselves to do all that we can, and if this is an extra opportunity, then we take it. Like you said, I mean, we, we put what was a cap, and I think most of us would say, if we can try to find some areas that we can reduce it, then let's have that, that meaningful discussion, if there's areas that we can cut, or something else that maybe we haven't caught on. I know there's a few, maybe a few things that may be added, that, I, I agree, I think we need to, to look at all of that. And if anything, then at least it prepares us, and the public will be made aware through this public meeting, that where we, you know, where we stand, and maybe that, that increase doesn't get cut, and they at least know where we're standing. But, I mean, I'm willing to look at, you know, some meaningful suggestions out there. I mean, I don't know if we're gonna make any cuts, but at least to have more dialogue about it, so, I, I agree.
That's why we're here. I thought we'd have an open dialogue today on some of these issues. Well, Dale has some additional information, Kristen has some additional information that we've been working on this last week. So with permission of the court, I'm gonna go ahead, call the meeting to order. It's a workshop, action workshop meeting. All members of the court are present, we have a quorum, and we have given to you several items. One, we've given you baseline budget estimates, et cetera. Well, Dale, you, you explain it, it's your packet.
The baseline budget estimate is what we proposed, the other thing.
The mic is on, the mic is on.
One, five about the effective rate, which brings us additional revenue of five million twenty-four thousand five ninety-four. If you can continue down the page, we went ahead and put the balances in that we were, we're talking about, that the, some of the, the items we will be possibly deciding on or voting on, we were asked to include the items here, they can be taken off when, whenever there is a decision made, but we included everything we've talked about before, which is on this checklist, and we've included the cost of living increase, we included the recommendation of new employees, we included the reclassifications. The cuts only came out to be seven hundred and sixteen thousand, we can go over that a little bit later, from what departments provided what cuts and which ones didn't, and then we go through each one of the ones that we have, the, of the department requests as additional funds that are in the balances, as well as some of our reductions of our transfers due to the road District Four funds, as well as reduction of the transfers from Coastal Parks for the contingency that we had put in last year for balances. So if we're at the 1.5% rate, that would bring us rough estimate of nineteen point seven million dollars, or a, right about eight hundred thousand dollar increase in, in fund bounce for eighteen nineteen.
Okay, and you added in a, a revenue from the constable's insurance fee increase.
Increase of three hundred thousand, yes.
Three hundred thousand.
We, we talked about four hundred, but my staff and I went through some stuff, it's, we, we probably, we're probably closer to being, bringing in four hundred, but if we put four hundred and we don't bring in four hundred, that'll be a, be a, 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 a negative impact on, on our balances. It's better to be a little bit low on our estimated additional increase in revenue and be above that when we come in, and then we can use that for next year for our clarification on how we wanna increase the rate, 'cause we really don't know right now.
We do not know. Okay, all right, so if the court, if the court votes to accept the fee schedule that we talked about, then we're looking at a possibility of about three hundred thousand dollars.
A thousand, or maybe more, maybe the less.
A little less, a little more. All right, what I'd like to invite Dale to do first, is we have, Dale and Kristen and I have spent a lot of time over the last week or so, looking at the one, the cross-theboard cuts. So Dale, would you please brief the court on where you think we are right now?
Well, the balances that we have, and you should have them, have a, a handout for you that says, the cross-theboard cuts, it's labeled for A-11. You'll see each of the departments where we proposed the cuts, and what the, the cuts that were submitted to my office. Majority of the ones that, that came in were where they sort of need to be. Some were very close, there was a few of those a little bit higher than what we projected. If you look for the tax assessor collector, we projected forty, he cut forty-seven, forty-seven thousand. For some other ones, there was not much cuts on some of the items. If you look on the, this is the next page, you'll see at the very bottom, under the law enforcement, the sheriff's office, they were supposed to cut seventy-one thousand from the sheriff, ten thousand dollars from ID, and one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from their jail, and they proposed no cuts.
Yeah, and I owe you a couple hundred bucks, sir, obviously we didn't do our math right, so I'll go back and fix mine too, so I just saw that, sorry about that.
For total, for the general fund, where there, the cuts that we received from each of the departments totaled seven hundred and sixteen thousand, which is about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars short of our, our one million dollar threshold. The remaining portions of it, you'll see, we also included road fund, stadium fairgrounds, island parks, island parks, airport, law library, as well as the vector control and city county health. And the last page, you'll see how some of the departments made their cuts. You'll see that the tax assessor collector is reducing one staff employee and reclassifying another staff employee on the downward spot. We have a reduction of the juvenile justice post adjudication of minus one, and the district attorney is giving back the site and release coordinator position that they had put in for a total reduction in salary of a hundred and fourteen thousand. That's what our proposed cuts have, have been, that we gotten from all the departments. It was very difficult with, working with them, my staff got called every name in the book, and with many threats. So this is where we're at, and then this is what the, the positions were, were, and this is where we're submitting, what, what they provide to us, and where, we wanna know how, where, where do we go from here?
Okay, so, just as a matter of discussion, if we're short in the million dollar cuts by two hundred and how much?
Ninety thousand, roughly.
We actually made that up, and the revenue side, if, at the top of the page, of three hundred thousand, so it's a wash.
No, it's not. That's not a wash, Judge. I, 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 let me tell you something. First of all, I am personally very offended by the fact that you got threats, and, and I, I think if you got threats that, that are really threats, you need to call, the district attorney's sitting over here, you need to go talk to them, 'cause that's just baloney. We're doing good, good for you, I hope you did, because if people threaten you, that's just wrong. You're doing your job, we're all trying to do our jobs up here, this isn't an easy job to do, and if people threaten you, that's just, so I, I hope you did go fill that out. Second of all, I think it's, I think it's not a wash, I don't think it's appropriate for the sheriff's office to just say zero, okay? We all got the email that said it's a tough thing to do, and I get it, and for, for him to come back with zero is not appropriate. So, that needs to be revisited, and someone needs to go back and, and look at that. I'm not saying, maybe he can't do the 1.15, but I'm, I'm sorry, to come back and just say zero, and I can't do anything, I don't think that's fair. And, and that goes for any divi, that goes for anybody, kinda quite a law five, title D, 4D.
Well, those are, those are what I, I put in the, since county court law five's always over budget, I don't know.
You know what, though? They all gotta do it. I, I, that was, that was the, the directive, and so everybody's gotta at least try to do this. I know it's not easy, I'm not, well, nobody up here, and I'm not speaking for everybody else, I'm speaking for me, 'cause I'm not trying to lump everybody else in here, I, I, we are not unsympathetic to this, we are doing our best in a very difficult deal with a county that's still trying to recover, so I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna do this, and I thought we'd vote on it, but apparently it's back on the list to vote again today, I'm, I don't know, I'm confused by all this, but whatever. So, I, I don't think it's a wash, and I don't think it's fair to say it's a wash, because that four hundred thousand was supposed to be additional money that we got, not a wash money. So, I, I do think if, if this court stays with, because apparently it's on the list to vote on today, if this court stays with these cuts, then, then we need to take it back to those who didn't submit a cut and say, you gotta give us something. And if they threaten you, then keep going to the DA. So that, I, that's, that's really bothersome, so. And, and again, I owe you some more money, my bad, we didn't do our math right, I'm gonna get you the rest of my cuts, and I apologize for that, so, that's on me.
And we will, we'll, we'll, we'll go through, and, and sheriff's office, we provide you everything they provided us on why they didn't, but we'll make sure we go that, the only, and I'll work a little bit on, on the Title IV, and the only, because the Title IV is so heavy on payroll, and the only payroll there is the judge, and I can't cut the judge's salary, so I'd have to cut some of the office spies, and they're almost threshold too, so all I'll do is best I can.
I appreciate it.
Okay, where's Title IV? I'm trying to follow y'all.
It's on the, under the second page, it's the thirty-three oh five.
Okay.
That's Title 4D court.
So he did no cuts?
I, I worked on theirs, and, and I, I couldn't cut three thousand, 'cause the only thing they have is a little bit of office spies, a little bit of miscellaneous costs, and the rest is almost nine, nine percent salary, so, and that's the salary of the judge, is the only thing there. So I'll work, I'll work some stuff, it, it won't be the three thousand, but I'll get as close as I can.
Okay, we'll come back and visit that. On your page oh-eight oh one, with the one oh-one-five, which is the page we're beginning to operate from today in our discussions, items above one, contingency pay, increase, retirement plan adjustments, voting, those are contractual obligations, we don't need to vote on those, those we're gonna have to do.
Correct.
So you can just take above one and say, that's money we got to find, and whatever it is, it is, 'cause we have to pay those. Those are contractual obligations. All right, number one, the tax valuation suit contingency, you wanna talk about that, Dale?
Uh, Kristen, you want, wanna go through that one?
I'd like to start with that one, and we'll just walk through these and try to answer all the questions, get some idea how people feel, so, that's one that we, we need to do, we have no idea where that suit is, as far as I know. Do we, Laura?
I'm sorry?
We don't have any idea where we are on the Flint Hills threat to sue, or suing the appraisal district.
No.
Nothing. So in the past, we put a contingency in our budget to take care of that unknown. If we don't have to spend it, if you don't have to spend it in your budget eighteen nineteen, you'll end up with another million dollars, which you're gonna have to carry forward till they settle something. So that, that one, to me, is a given, I think, I think we need to leave it in there, but I'm open to discussion, you all talk about that. That's one that, that paid off well for us, we put a million dollars in for Valero, and it really made a difference in how we could pay that.
And do we think that suit's gonna be settled in this budget year?
We, I don't think we have any idea at this point.
We don't have any idea.
And the only reason I ask is, if, if lawsuits do take time, do we have to put it all aside this year? I'm just asking. I, I agree we have to put it aside, I'm just asking if we have to put it all aside this year for this budget cycle, or can we put some aside this time and some aside another time? Just asking.
All we're doing is, we're, we're committing resources for the availability to fund it, if it doesn't happen, then that, it's, it doesn't go anywhere. It's just appropriations to set aside, just in case.
No, no, I get, I'm, the question I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is, 'cause we have a huge tax increase on the board, I'm trying to look at things, as John said, meaningful conversation that we're trying to have, and so I'm asking, do we think we are gonna settle this suit this year, and we're gonna need it all this year, or could we put five hundred thousand aside this year, five hundred thousand aside for next year? I'm just asking, I know it's a hard question to answer, but I'm, I'm trying to have meaningful discussion.
Well, if we go back two or three years, when Valero was similar to the situation where we had three years of Valero, the refund of Valero was 1.6 million dollars. Right now, we're in the second, adding a third year for Flint Hills, so we can probably assume it's gonna be close to that as well. Now, the value, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't sure. So, is there a possibility of not doing the full million? Yes, would I, would say take the full million away? No.
Okay, good answer.
All right.
Just to let you know, we do have, we're, obviously because we're self-insured, we do have, on all our lawsuits, we have monies set aside.
But this is, this is, they're not suing, they're suing the appraisal district.
Right.
Okay, so we'll...
Shoot, why don't we just give it to them? I mean, all we're doing is giving it to them, I mean, we're setting it aside, let's just go give it to them, tell them to quit suing us, or they're just gonna, I mean, I don't know, I mean, all we do is give these people back money all the time.
Uh...
Sorry, I don't mean to be a smart aleck, but that's, that's, this is a smart aleck issue, I'm, I'm sick of it, I mean, I, I just, I'm so frustrated with these people suing us all the time.
For discussion purposes, let's leave it in right now, and we, we get down to the bottom where... Health insurance increase, 1% increase in premiums, I don't think this is in question, we need to do that. It's ninety-five thousand, we gave you all to break out a couple of weeks ago about how the effect on the premium would be for individuals, as well as how it would affect, this is the county's part, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And we gave you what it would mean to an individual, and it was a minimal amount, but it's, it's...
For a person or a family, it'd be four dollars a month.
A month?
Yes.
Okay. Increase in stop-loss health insurance, talk about that a little bit, Kristen, please.
Okay, um, this would not have an impact on the general fund, but we wanted to put this item on here. It will be, come back as a, as a more formalized item, probably either this next court or the, the following court, but what this is, this would be taking us from a twelve-by-twelve plan to a twenty-four-by-twelve plan, and basically, the twelve-by-twelve only covers claims within the policy period, and the twenty-four-by-twelve covers claims from the, incurred in the prior year, but not paid until this current year, plus the claims in the current year. There is about a sixty thousand dollar increase in premium by doing this, but this, this is the recommendation that we've been given.
And as you said, there, there is a sixty dot, sixty thousand dollar increase, but we know the last few years, we've been lowering our, our reinsurance fund that we pay the, federal government for the ACA, and we believe that's continuing going down, and we believe that's gonna go down another twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, so the main offset will probably be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, if we, we do this.
And, and let me help, if you have a question. As you know, we, we changed our, um, plan this year, where we went to Aetna, and when we went to Aetna, it became a global plan, which covered us wherever we were, anywhere in the country, and, but prior to that, we had Krista's spawn, and we were limited in our network to certain areas, and when we went to MD Anderson, or we went to somewhere else, the cost became much greater. Because we have a global network, we have recognized some savings this year, and it's good, they've done a great job. But the claims that ran out of the old plan into the new plan are seven, eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of claims that finally are maturing, it took us forever for some of these things to mature. And in that window, we don't have a stop-loss on those claims, and we discussed this the other day with our carrier and with our consultant, and the recommendation is that we need to put the stop-loss twenty-four seven, which means that we need it on the maturing claims, as well as the new claims, because something could jump up on those old claims and really bite us. Cost is about sixty thousand dollars, now, we didn't put that in here, but it, it's there, but as Dale said, I think we're gonna offset all or most of that with savings because of the Affordable Care Act and some other things that we no longer have to pay. So we're putting in there's a zero, and if it affects us in any way, it'll be a very minimal effect, we think, but we need to, we need to have the court know this, and we need to do this, 'cause this is just good business. So that, that's in there at no additional cost, and we're gonna do everything we can, working with whomever, to make sure it stays at no additional cost, but we are going to need to pick up the stop-loss coverage on those claims, the runoff claims. Now, the new plan, going forward, Jan, October one, will not have that, 'cause it'll be a full year in the plan, so it's, it's all covered, and it'll be all covered under the stop-loss.
And this does, is, this is not funded from the general fund, it is funded out of the, our health insurance.
That's right, we have an insurance fund to play, pay this. So it has a zero effect on the general fund.
Is there always a balance there, though?
Do what?
We have a balance there in the fund, yes.
We do have.
We do have.
Thank God we do. You know, in the past three years, we've had a negative balance. Let's just hope we get through this month.
If I be goes a balance, what, what's the balance?
Now, 1.4 million.
1.4?
Yeah. We still got another month and a half of claims and, and, and prescription claims and, and medical claims to do, as well as a few more adjustments we have to take care of. We're projecting probably ending close to a million dollars in fund bounce. You ever take a little bit?
And it's been a negative, as you know, for three years, it's really hurt us. New positions in this budget proposal, we have a COLA salary adjustment of 2%, I know Commissioner Gonzalez had raised the question about maybe doing more. The 2% cost is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. This is the first COLA adjustment we proposed in three years?
Two years, I believe.
Two years? Two years. And I, I think this is worthwhile, and I certainly support 2%, and, and as you can see, it, it's never enough, but we're trying...
Didn't we do a COLA two, not last year, but the, the year before?
Yeah, two years, so this is...
But we just, we didn't do one just last year.
I couldn't remember if it was one year.
Yeah, just, just, yeah, right.
So the 2% COLA is in there. Number five-six, recommended new positions, we gave you attached to this information. It's oh-nine dash one, which is attached to the information we got this morning, gave you this morning. It's a total of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We have a new public works mechanical maintenance person for the jail, good suggestion, and as you can see, the other suggested changes, if you feel like you'd like to discuss those, I'm open discussing those.
I, I do.
Okay, fine.
My, my recommendation would be that we don't, we just get rid of it. The only, the only one that I really think is essential right now is a Constable Three in the jail, because it's, it, it's safety and security, you know, the inmates and, and the community also. I think the Constable Three needs to go out there and patrol those areas they can't reach. The jail is in dire need of maintenance, so, there's only two positions that I would really approve at this time, I would recommend, the other ones I wouldn't recommend, hold on to until next year or something. That's what I'm looking at right now, saving almost a hundred thousand, or maybe a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or whatever, so...
Any other comments or questions on that?
Are these positions in the budget that you gave us, where they cut, they're not included in their budget cuts?
They were.
They were included in the budget cuts if they were to get this.
The only thing to do on the cuts to make sure is, we didn't know what the position the court was gonna be, so we made, we gave them everything, including these new positions, so they wouldn't have a cut, so we could, it was, it was real fast, and we had to do some stuff, and get some stuff together, and, and we didn't wanna give people, here's your balances to cut, and this gets added, then we had to go back for, for additional ones.
So if we were just to approve these two, then we would save some money on the others, but we don't know how much?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So when we get to this, and we start voting on the budget, we'll entertain a motion at that time from Commissioner Gonzalez, and see if it takes any difference, makes any difference. Right now, the only suggestions that's been made is that we don't do no new positions other than Constable Precinct Three, and who's the other, the sheriff?
Jail maintenance.
Jail maintenance, the building maintenance.
Oh, the maintenance?
Jail.
Okay, so it's fifteen hundred, and the Constable Three, Precinct Three.
Judge, so, I'm still, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to beat the dead horse, but this is, this is the first time I've ever done a budget in all the years I've done budgets like this. I, I will discuss this till, everybody wants to discuss it. I think we've had hours and hours and hours of budget meetings, if we need to have hours and hours more, I will. I, I don't think it's appropriate to vote on this now, when it doesn't matter, because...
I'm not voting.
Well, no, no, but that's what this is, today, you're asking for us to vote on all these items.
We have recommendations right now, probably, Commissioner.
No, it's a vote, I mean, it's like...
Well, I know it's a workshop.
I get it, but I, I get it, but I, I'm all, I'm all about that, I want you to talk all you want, I really do, and I'm not being, but I, but I'm saying, part of this workshop is, we're supposed to vote at the end of it, so I'm saying, I, I am objecting to voting, this is not a vote, a record vote, shouldn't be a record vote, this is not how we do budgets. Again, I will talk all about this all day long, I, I appreciate it, but I'm just saying, I, I am, I am objecting to the voting part of this later on, that's all I'm saying, so, and I'm not gonna vote, so, I don't think that's what we are supposed to do.
You mean, you wanna vote tomorrow?
I wanna vote whenever the vote is for the real budget, like, this vote doesn't count, it's, it's, it's a not-count budget, I don't, I don't understand...
Commissioner, if I can just interject, unfortunately, if, if we don't get an indication of the, the direction that the court is headed today, it's going to be incredibly difficult to propose a budget, and Dale has to file the proposed budget by September 5th.
But Judge Neal proposed a budget two months ago, that's how we've always done this, we've always had a budget proposed by the judge, who, y'all did great work on it, and then we have a meeting, and we all make our amendments, and we going down the road, so I don't know why we're having to vote on this more than one time, because we had that original budget, and we talked about a lot of stuff, we've talked about it a lot, talked a lot, talked about it, if you didn't get a consensus, then, okay, I get it, but I don't understand why we have to vote on something, I think we ought to start from the budget in which you guys worked so hard to propose, and then make our amendments from there, vote on it, and go on. So, that's just, that's just my opinion, I get that there's four others people that may feel differently, and I'm just registering my opinion, so, but I will talk about all this stuff, I mean, I'm sincerely, I'm not trying to be smarty, I mean, I really, I'm, I'm happy to talk about all this stuff, as long as y'all wanna talk about it, I just don't feel comfortable voting now when it doesn't mean anything, and we're gonna come back and do this all over again, again, because people are not gonna like the way we vote today, and then we're gonna have, you know, go back and do this, and then the whole vote could change a hundred and eighty degrees when we do it again. So, anyway, I'm done, go ahead, sorry.
And I, I do understand what, I think we know where the vote's gonna go, it's been proposed, I think the taxes are gonna be raised, and basically, you're gonna have the money to do basically whatever the court wants to do, and I think I've made it pretty clear, I'm not voting for a budget that, where we raise taxes, so I think it pretty well shows where I stand, and I'm just not gonna do it. And, and I want people to get a cost of living raise, I do, I do, but I think if you're gonna do that, you gotta cut some other places, and I have a real frustrations with, with where these directors all get these big raises, and the people that are out in the field that are busting their butts out in the heat don't get them, and that really bothers me how this court does this, and I hope down the road, next year, that we're gonna be able to discuss how that's done, because I think some of the ones that really should get the raises don't. And I understand why the sheriff doesn't wanna cut anything in his budget. They're tapped, they're tapped right now, and that's, that's an area that is underpaid, so I'm having a real, a real hard time with this as well.
I, I, I think that this is a needed exercise. I mean, we, I don't think that this is a done deal. I, 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 I mean, that's why I said from the beginning, we, I, I think that, you know, there's ways that we can cut. There's been suggestions that have been out there, that are just part of the proposal. We haven't voted on them yet, we're not gonna vote on them today, obviously, that's already been explained to us. But we're gonna give staff direction on where, where we're going with this. And I think this, that this is a healthy exercise for us to have, because I agree, I think there's some positions that, you know, when you give yourself a, a big pay raise, that, that, we're the ones to police that. We're the ones to say yes or no. And none of this should be rubber stamp. And I think we all agree, you know, frustration of when we ask, you know, we're, you know, we're told so many times to stay out of an elected office position. I'm the elected official, you can't tell me what to do. Well, the budget is the one time a year that we have the ability to say, look, we control the purse strings, and we have to tell you what to do in this one instance, and you have to create policy and procedures around this. Now, are we gonna cut the sheriff more than what he needs? I don't think so. I think that there will be cuts that are healthy cuts that we all have to make. We're all making, we're all making sacrifices. I, and, and to exclude one or two, well, then maybe that's dialogue we should have. Like we said with the, with the, um, 30-day hiring freeze. We never said, or what we actually said is excluding law enforcement. They were the ones that we said. So maybe that's what we, we do. Maybe from here on out, we say, hey, we agree, law enforcement, jail, sheriff's office, that should be excluded, DA's office, that should be excluded. But beyond that, everyone else has to make cuts. But I, I don't think that this is a done deal. I think we need to have more discussion on this, because obviously, there's still more ideas that are coming out there. And, 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 like I said, I'm, I'm willing to look at if we need to make cuts. I mean, we've all kinda made proposals, we've all thrown out ideas out there, but this is not final. And, and, and I, this is, you know, every time we come to these budget workshops, I'm like, gosh, this, you know, this could be messy, this could, this could be really difficult. And, and Auditor Kristen, everyone, it's been really helpful. Judge, I know you've been a big part of this, and this is not, this is a, an unusual budget. Because, you know, compared to this one last year, it's different how we operate. But I think we have to, because we're taking such a big hit. So I think we need more dialogue. I mean, and to be able to give more direction, I, I totally support and, and agree with that. I still think we need to look at all this. I mean, there's, there's some things that I have just quietly let you all say, this is what I wanna do. And I haven't really said much, because I think it was just more of a, we'll give you what we want, or we're, we're telling you how we feel, but there will be a vote one day, and, and that's when we'll have that discussion. But today, I think we're still feeling each other out, as far as what we want cut, what we don't. And, um, you know, can hear Commissioner Vaughn saying, you know, she wants the, the cost of living increase, but maybe there's other areas. I'm, you know, I'm willing to hear where we can or where we should, uh, because I-
You can't do a cost of living increase when you're wanting to raise taxes on the citizens of Oasis County. In the real world, you don't get a raise if you have no money. We have no money, and we got 1.4 million more than we got last year, and we still have no money, and we wanna increase everything. That's not right. You cannot keep operating, you can't operate this county like that. You can't do it.
Well, and, and, you know, I, I think, you know, with your voice and your ideas, you've given us a lot to look at this year, and, and, and a different perspective for the budget. And, and for me, that's why I'm willing to say, let's look at what else can be cut or re, you know-
And I appreciate that.
What, you know, what line items can we add? Unfortunately, you know, government has increases in everything, just like the rest of the world. We cannot keep government at a bottom-line budget number that is never gonna move. It's gotta move, because the world around us is moving. Business world, you know, is moving. I mean, costs that go up, gasoline costs, personnel costs, just to be able to maintain good qualified employees. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to, to, you know, benefits, healthcare, stuff like that, that we, that just are increases that are natural. So I agree, we need to look at what we need to make cuts at. Maybe it's something similar to what Commissioner Gonzalez said, hey, we like all those, but we really need the jail maintenance worker, which by the way, I think is an absolute, just one of the best recommendations I, I've seen, uh, to suggest that we have that permanent person there, and then, you know, an extra constable. So I just, I wanna hear more. I, 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 I just don't, I, I don't wanna hear, that's it, we're done, there's no other, other thing we can do. I think that today is definitely a day that we can continue to talk through this, give some better direction, and then we, we'll go from there. I mean, I don't mind meeting more times if we have to. As long as we're getting something discussed, and I feel something that's, that's meaningful, that we're getting ideas of where can we make additional cuts, or what, how can we make suggestions like, like that million dollars? I think that's a great, that was a great question, you know? Do we have to take it all on this year with that responsibility, that tax valuation suit? That's, that's what we're accomplishing today. And if we didn't meet today, we wouldn't have had that come out. So I hope we continue to keep doing this. I mean, I, like I said, there's, there's some areas that I don't totally agree with, but when we make that final vote, we'll get to it, or when we get to that line item a little bit later on, I'll talk about it, but I, I, I think that we're doing, I think we're doing good work here.
You know, the other thing, Judge, I might as well say what I wanna say here, but I think from, um, from number five, uh, number six, reclassification, to all the way to number nine, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm wanting to vote against it. Uh, we, where we're at right now, I don't think nobody should get reclassified, maybe next year? You know, because I mean, I'm, I'm at 2.5% across the board, the bo-, people in the bottom get some money, but if we're not, then I, I really don't care to reclassify anybody this year. We're having a hard time with the budget.
You'll get an opportunity to, uh, make, make that motion and have that vote?
Okay, sure.
And then, it going kind of along the same lines, or not same lines, going along the lines of, you, the struggle for me with this has been, we're sending a very, I think, we're sending a very mixed message. Cut everyone, but we're gonna give everyone raises. That, that's a really weird mixed signal, that I'm not understanding how we're sending. I would love to give people raises every year, bigger, better, there's no question. I, I, I would too, but I, it, this is hard for me, because we're telling all these people to, to cut your budget. Dale's getting threats. Some people are saying they won't do it, and, and probably, like you said, Carolyn, very justifiably so. But yet, then we're saying, we're gonna go not only give a COLA, but then we're got that other deal, that I'm not sure I agree with that philosophy, where the every three years, you automatically get something. I think we oughta be on a merit-based system. I don't know if we can or can't do that. I don't think it oughta just be all the time, every time, cost of living. There oughta be a merit-based pay situation for people who outperform and do better work. Um, so some people in this budget, if we do this, are gonna get a 4.5% raise, which is more than law enforcement's getting, you know? That's not fair. So there's a lot of things that I think that we have, and I get it, nothing's, nothing has been voted on, nothing has been agreed upon, but I do think it's a very mixed message when we're saying, okay, everybody, we are so tight, we need to cut 1.15% across the board, but yet, we've got enough money somehow to come up with raises. Well, you can't find additional cuts. I mean, you can only cut so much. So if you, again, starting back from the budget in which was proposed originally, which is how we've always done it, there was 2.765 million dollars of, of challenges. That's where I started, and thought, okay, I'm gonna, I need to figure out how I can cut 2.765 million and not cut into the, um, general fund, or the, uh, reserve. That, that's where I was starting from. But now we've thrown all these different things in, and we've done all these different things, we've had these great conversations, and they are great conversations. So I don't even know where to start anymore, because normally, you just start from the budget that Lloyd lays out. So I, I think there's some mixed messages here, and that's why I've had a hard time, because every time I go and try to figure out where can I cut, we add something back in, and it's something big. So, or we potentially, we haven't done it, but we potentially add something back, big back in. I, I, I don't, I, I don't know how to keep finding cuts if, if every time we find some cuts, then we add it right back in. But that wasn't where I was trying to go. So that's where I'm so frustrated, and that's why I am, have, have had such a difficult time with this budget, because this is different than we've done it. I'm, I'm trying to adjust the best I can, but I'm, I'm struggling because this, I'm just struggling, because that's, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where we are either. So, you know, to me, I'd rather just go back to the original budget that was laid out, and start making amendments, and keep having discussion. And again, I'm with you, John, I'll meet 100 more times if we need to, 'cause I, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't wanna vote, uh, when I don't need, when it's not a, a, a real vote. I, I would rather go back to the original budget, and just everybody start making amendments. We've had, we've discussed all these items, we've, we've talked about it, Joe likes certain things, I like certain things, John likes certain, let's, let's just put them all on the table, and have our vote from the original laid-out proposed budget that, that the judge laid out, and go from there. That's all I'm trying to get to, because I, I, I'm pretty good at finding cuts, but I'm running out of cuts. And every, and I don't, I, you need to even propose, I'm running out of cuts, you know? So, anyway, I don't, I don't-
Um, when is, when are we voting?
On, on the adopted budget?
Yeah.
September 12th.
Nothing prior to September the 12th.
We have a public hearing on the, on the proposed tax increase tomorrow, and then on September 6th, but there's nothing scheduled in between now and then.
If we wanted to move the schedule up, I've already scheduled the public hearings. Can I change those?
Public hearings, no, you'd have to, they're advertised in, in the newspaper. So you'd have to re-advertise. You have to start a little-
So tomorrow's public hearing is a public hearing on the proposed increase of 1.5 cents?
Yes.
All right.
But, but generally, we also talk about what is included in, in the budget.
Right, right. You have prepared a presentation for that, which is fine. That talks about the, uh, discounts we give, and all the public policy, and the other things, that, that's part of it, it's over there. The second public hearing on the proposed tax increase is when?
September the 6th.
6th. The next court meeting is when?
September the 5th.
5th?
Yes.
So all I'm proposing, Judge, is to go back to your original budget, which you laid out, and make amendments from that budget.
Uh, no, I, I-
Right?
I got it.
But, but having meetings, all we wanna have, all the time.
I'm just trying to figure out legally where we are. I mean, you know, we're under the truth and taxation law, and-
Sure, what it is anymore, Joe.
We just need to, we just need to be very careful. Which budget are you talking about, the, the 1.5 cent, or?
No, I'm saying the one, whatever one you laid out at the very beginning that said, I, I, I have to go back and, I mean, you know what I'm saying? In other words, that's-
And, and-
And then you would make your, you would then make an amendment to, like, you, you would take that budget with the budget challenges, your, your amendment on that might be to, to increase the 1.5 cents from that, mine might be to cut this, Carolyn's might be, whatever, but-
No, and I, I understand the process. I'm just trying to make sure we're not gonna fall in a hole here with the truth and taxation law and the public hearings.
Well, and, and what we do have the ability to do today, I mean, Dale has these spreadsheets in Excel, and, I mean, he can add and subtract, and, you know, and, and we can look at-
Play with it, yeah.
Yes, and we can look at different, so I, I thought that was kind of the intent of today.
I do too.
Um, taking things in, or, or taking things out, leaving things in, so you can see where we actually end up. And so that was, that's kind of how, how I envisioned today going.
Uh, uh, and that's fine. I'm just saying, I think we oughta vote once, based on the original budget. This is a great opportunity to do exactly what you said, go back and forth, and mess with the numbers, and see if you do this, and see if you do that.
All right. Let me, let me see if I can move us on here. I'm gonna go down to 10. Are we still in agreement that we need a hiring freeze?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, the cuts, we're gonna go back and-
Would it be for six months, or to be six months?
30 days.
No, I'm saying, but, I mean, 30 days to wait to hire, but is this for a six-months period, or?
Well, we do it till the court removes it.
The whole year.
Oh, okay, till we go-
It's, it's, it's an annual hiring freeze, which is only fair.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I think, yeah, I think the discussion there, Judge, is how much, you know, how much ti-, I think there seems to be consensus on, A, hiring freeze, I don't know what the cons-, I don't know what the consensus on the, the amount of time-
30 days actually gives you 60, so.
Right. And, and I would argue, again, based on the tightness of the budget, that maybe we oughta look at 60, which gives you 90. I get there may not be three votes for that, but I think there's definitely the consensus on a hiring freeze, what, but what the amount of time is.
Okay. Uh, the, the rest of the items, 12, 13, 14, 19, um, those sort, those are important. Those are things that we can actually vote on by line item when we get ready to vote. If we leave them in there right now, they're in there. Um, when, if we wanted to move this to an earlier date, so we could begin record voting, when can I do that?
I think the problem with that is, um, you need, um, you need to know, um, that, how the vote is on the taxes, in order to, to really know what the budget is gonna be like. So that's why, that's why they're having such a hard time right now. But, um-
So the, the meeting to, to adopt the tax rate, which is also in September 12, September 12th is the meeting to adopt the tax rate, and the public hearing on, and the adoption of the budget. So the meeting to adopt the tax rate, the meeting must be no less than three days, and no more than 14 days after the second public hearing on the tax increase.
You know what, Judge? Can I, one thing I didn't think of, we have actually passed, uh, the, a preliminary, um, tax rate based on, actually, this budget that you gave it.
That's right, that's right.
So let me, let me, let me go back and correct, 'cause the court has a, a record vote on the 1.5 of those. That's where we could start from.
That's where I'm starting.
That, and that, that's where we can start from.
Exactly where I am.
And do a record vote, because the court has voted. I apologize, so let me go back. The court has voted, you could use this budget, 'cause this passed.
That's what I planned to do.
Okay. Then we could wait till September 12th and vote that up or down, line item by line item, and go through it.
So, the public hearing scheduled for tomorrow, and the public hearing scheduled for-
The 6th.
The 6th will be public hearings on the voted-on 1.5 cent tax increase.
Yes.
Period?
Yes.
No discussion of the budget? Anything else?
Well, there, there is a little discussion on, on the budget. Generally, in the presentation, we say what's included in-
No, I, I, I agree. You, you give the public additional information of why we're doing that, and what, like we do every year.
Yes.
We do that. It's a part of the presentation on the hearing on the proposed 1.5 cent tax increase.
Yes.
So we do that, we schedule those, and then we begin the record vote for the budget itself is on the 11th?
The 12th.
The 12th.
And in theory, all this is already in there. I mean, in theory, this is where we'd start.
We're, yeah, I got it, um-
I'm okay now.
I think, I think you were going one direction, now I think you're back on the right direction.
Well, I'd forgotten that we voted on this record vote, so you, y'all have already, we've already, so this is where we would start on September twelfth.
All right, so where we are today, my attempt today was to do what we did, was just to sort, open this up, let's start having some indication. We've gotten some indication from some of the commissioners on how they feel about this, and that's good. They feel differently when they start voting, but, but that's how you feel. So, what we're gonna do, I don't see any reason to go down to all the road district funds and all. We pretty well hashed that out. I think we all know where that's going. I think we know where some of the money's coming from roads district funds and how it all sits. So, what we're operating off, and we cut this pretty short today, we're operating off a proposal of one and a half cent increase based on this budget would give us, theoretically, give us a twenty percent balance. Right? Right, Dale? Huh? Twenty-one percent. Twenty point nine. Twenty-one percent. Now, what we have decision items is I'm gonna ask you between now and the eleventh, because we won't be doing this again, as I understand it, on any of this discussion, between now and the eleventh, you guys be ready to go line item by line item as we vote, and it's a record vote. Means we are recording the vote of each commissioner and the judge, right? Right? Right. So, the meetings we're gonna have on the public hearings are for the tax rate that we've already approved, and we'll just hold a meeting tomorrow. If there's nobody shows up, we go home. If they come, we'll talk about it, right?
Yes.
And you'll, and you'll brief based on the information that you've given me and that we've always had in the past.
Yes. Now, I do need to bring up one issue that could become problematic. On September the first, we will be publishing the notice on a proposed increase of the elected official salaries. Now, as can, as we've done consistently in the past, but there's been more of a consensus on a COLA up to this point, we did include, Teresa, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, we did include that COLA in the elected officials' proposed salary for 2018, 19. And there are two additional items that were for discussion, which would have been for the tax assessor collector and the district clerk bringing them up to the same base salary as the county clerk. And so, those, however, were not included in those proposed-
It's in here, though.
Right, but it wasn't in their letter.
Oh.
And so, that's, that's going to be-
Do I have to reissue the letter?
Yes, because the, our intent was today-
Get me the letter.
Okay. Our intent was today that we were going to, you know, get, get a general direction of where the court was headed, and so, if we needed to reissue those letters today, we were going to do so.
Get me the letter. So, we're legal, just however they, however they need to be, Teresa.
It can always go down. It just can't go up.
Teresa, just whatever I need to do.
Okay, now, if we vote against the increases, what happens? If we vote against the increases, what happens? I mean, it's already on there.
They, they got, I mean, they got the letter. It didn't include the state, the-
The COLA, the COLA. Yeah, when I said, when I sent out the letter-
Right.
To those two people, we didn't include the COLA.
No, we included, we included the COLA across the board. We didn't include their specific tat, yeah, their reclassification.
Well, I'm sorry, whatever that magic word is, you know. Okay. You're here for a reason, Melissa. Yeah, you wanna talk?
It was just in regards to our-
Okay. Public hearing, okay.
No, but they, well, she can, you can, you're here. You can come. Well, I mean, right, Judge? I don't wanna have to make-
Nah, I'm, I'm fine with her coming on up. Got the damnedest blouse on I've ever seen, though. That orange, you just, you just got an automatic, you got an automatic no, so you better find two other votes.
It's the prisoner orange.
Don't worry, I'm with you. Don't worry.
I can't sit by the prisoners, because they think I'm, I'm there with them. It was just in regards to our cuts. I told Mr. Gonzalez I would come on his behalf, and just the importance of, of the, what our office does. I just had a meeting with CCPD this morning. We're at twenty-four right now. More likely, once the medical examiner writes reports, it'll be twenty-five murders for August. We were at a total of twenty-three for last year. And of course, you know, we, our cut was the site and release, which we're really start, trying to kick off. We've avoided hiring, even though the court gave us that position. We've avoided hiring to save those monies each month to be responsible and to not take advantage of the position that was given and to save those monies until we actually had the live scan machine that Commissioner Chesney and Commissioner Gonzalez, you know, offered to fund for us. And in addition to that one position, there's several cuts that we have to make on professional services. Those costs are not going down. They're only going up. We have, I believe, at last count, fifty-four murder defendants pending, with twenty-three being capital murders. We're having to reevaluate our positions on those. We have one expert that is charging us $25,000 just for that one case. That's a capital murder case. And I, and I understand, we try to do as best we can with our monies. We're not frivolous, but we really need to, the positions that we have, and we really need the, we were asked to cut close to $60,000 from our budget. And crime is not decreasing. It's only increasing. And we're asking that we be spared from the, the budget costs. I know, you know, I heard Commissioner Vaughn, when she's talking about, you know, it seems that the people at the lower end are not receiving those. You know, and I think, you know, if I can make one suggestion, that if somebody earns over an X amount of dollars that, you know, for this year, that, you know, the two percent not go to them, and it goes to the people earning on the lower scale of the, of the earnings. And that's just one, one thing that I can propose. Okay?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
When you say professional services, what all does that entail?
Professional services are if we need to get a court reporter's record for somebody that testified to use against another defendant or against that defendant in a, in a different situation. It's for those monies. It's for experts that we have to attain for trials. We have a capital murder coming in January. That's the one I referenced with the $25,000, and that's on the cheap end. The, what happens on a capital murder, if somebody brings out that the person is maybe mentally disabled and they get an expert, well, then we have to turn around and get an expert.
Okay, and we are twenty-five murders so far this August in the entire year. Last year, we had twenty-three, so we're already up, and the year's not even over.
That's correct, ma'am.
That's scary.
It is, it is. I think it's, it is for everybody in this community.
Thank you.
I like Chicago.
Yes, sir.
Well, it was pretty close.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming in, Melissa.
Judge, one of, one of the things I wanted to ask about, and maybe someone can correct me, is, so, like, elected officials, when we, when we vote, or if we vote for any kind of cost of living increase, that also impacts commissioners' court. Is that right?
Yes.
And we have to do that, right? Is that law, or is that just policy, or what is it that requires us to have to include ourselves in, in that increase?
I'm, I'm not sure on, on the reason that we, it's always included. However, I do know that you do have the option to, I know some, some of the commissioners have, have opted to put that money in, in, like, your precinct funds instead of it going toward your, toward your salary.
I don't, I don't want it, period. So, whatever you have to, I don't want it.
I need to answer your question. It's basically, you're considered an employee, so when you're, it's just a policy decision, and you go across the board, including yourselves. But you have the option to decide, "I don't want it."
Well, but I-
For the last eight years, I've taken and given back $1,500 from my trial house to go back into my budget, so I can use it in county projects, and it's been over $10,000.
That's not necessarily what I'm asking. What I'm asking, is there a state law, or is it just policy?
Policy.
It's just policy. It's policy.
So, if we vote to change, to put a policy, because all we're doing is, we're saying, "Look, okay, you give me a thousand. I'm not gonna take it as my salary, but I'm still gonna benefit. It's still gonna be used." I'm talking about not having that money utilized.
I agree.
I think that, and it may not be a lot. It may be more symbolic, but I think that that symbolism shows a lot. I mean, we're having to take cuts. We're talking about proposed cuts already, more than in excess of what other departments and offices are being asked to do. But, like, on a salary increase, that's something I, I-
Totally agree.
I can wait.
Totally agree.
You know, I can wait. I mean, you know, my three years will be here soon, and I'll get bump, my little bump, and I, I think that that's enough. So, if it's just a policy, I'd like to see it where we can just adjust it.
We can-
If we feel, if we feel that we don't want it-
There's no thing, I'm writing, so basically, you can-
Well, I think it's part of the personal policy and civil service policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait a minute, yeah, 'cause that's, 'cause we're not-
Those items, for, for clarification, just to make sure the policy there is, about twelve, fifteen years ago, we had some company come in to, to do a total review of all staff and members, including elected officials, and they put y'all on the pay schedule. So, that's where we'd have to then revise those pay schedules, working with HR and possibly what y'all see, see fit.
But they're not changing the pay schedule. They're just talking about a-
But if, 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 if they're on the same pay schedule as the district clerk, your, your office, and, and the county clerk, and those are getting increased, then these have to be increased, too, because they're on the same pay schedule.
Right, correct.
Right, what I was-
Well, we not make a motion during the budget thing and say, we make a motion that none of the commissioners here get this, get a raise, because we, we need to be example. We should not be taking a raise.
Well, because here's what I was told, because I remember, I've been one of those ones that have not taken my raises, and I've been told every year, "I can't, I can't just not take it. I have to, it has to go somewhere." So, I've done the same thing. I've sent an email to Dale every year that says, "Do not give me a raise," and put it in precinct for funds, so I can use it for my constituents. But if I, I would much rather not be able to take it, period, and, and recognize the savings, but I've just been told I couldn't do that, and so, I've just-
That's been the policy of the commissioners.
No, no, I get it, and if, and so, what-
Other elected officials, I think we had one other elected official that forego the raise and gave back the money. We, we, we were lowered to pay. So, if y'all send us a letter saying, "We don't want this increase," and nothing else to be the fund, we can, we reduce our salary by that much.
Right, but what I was told was the money had to go somewhere. That's what you-
You can individually, you can individually decline a raise.
But can we exclude that on a vote? That's all, that's all I wanna figure out, because when we do go make those, those official votes, I wanna be able to say, "I make a motion that we do not include the commissioners' court in those elected official pay raises." I'm not gonna speak for the other officials, but at least here as a court collectively. And so, I wanna be able to say that. And so, I'm trying to figure out right now is, is it policy or is it state? Because if it was state, I was gonna say-
We'd have to probably go back and look at the, the personnel manuals.
And we got some time, so that's why I wanted to bring it up now, but I think that that just will go a long way to show-
Great suggestion.
The workers that, and, and employees that we-
Absolutely.
We don't want it.
They don't need to go on the precinct funds.
Well, we have, we have elected official pay schedule and the regular employees' pay schedule, so there's two different ones.
So, now we're gonna have three now?
Well, we, we already have three. We have the elected officials, we have regular people, and we have law enforcement. And then we have health department. So, we got four.
Just don't include-
What did you say this year wouldn't accept it?
Right, this year, we just don't accept it.
That would take care of it for this year, and then we can work on the policy going forward. We could-
Whatever it is.
Okay, I, there seems to be a consensus on that. No, that's good, John. I appreciate you bringing it up.
We're just moving right along.
Yeah, right, eh? We're getting some consensus. I like consensus.
Okay, I think those were good suggestions. Make sure we follow the rules. What else would you all like to talk about? Because I'm, I'm, I think I'm set. I have two public hearings on the tax rate, and I have a record vote on the eleventh, right?
Twelfth.
Twelve. I don't know why I won't. I'm gonna have mine on the eleventh. The rest I'm gonna have on the twelfth. We'll have the record vote on the twelfth.
Judge, I want, I want to make sure that-
Yep.
And we don't have the percentages on this decision item sheet that we were giving the blank one today, but in some of the proposals, I remember that there were some recommendations to give, you know, an individual give themselves, like, a big bump in increase. And while I agree everyone's probably underpaid when you compare to other comparables, governments or private sector, a big percentage increase, I, I would just say, like, across the board, I wouldn't wanna see anyone get, like, more than, say, a five percent pay increase. Now, if y'all can go back and figure that out, as far as what the proposals were, I'd rather not, you know, kinda get into publicly what, what positions that they were or that I think they were. But, uh-
Well, we're gonna-
If you can go back to the proposals, you know, and there was individuals, and they were pretty big.
It's on, it's on sheet ten dash one that was given to you this morning.
The class is on, on your screens now.
Do we know the percentage? Oh, it is, it is on there. Okay. So, there's several.
There are two that are ten percent.
Several. There's ten percent. There's twenty-one percent. See, those are big.
Especially that twenty-one percent in HR. Both of those right there are way too high. That's ridiculous. Stephen, come up here and ask for that.
Well, you're gonna get a chance to vote on that.
Well, my, it'll be a resounding no.
Well, you're giving away your voter.
I think they are. I think they already know.
John, what we're gonna do, we'll go line by line off the-
And, and like I said, I'd rather not, I mean, make it to where we're going after one individual. I mean, I think there's, there's an increase that we can make. The associate, like, the magistrate judge, I mean, that's different, because we're actually adding hours, because that was a request. So, I would say exclude that, but regular positions that are already there and just need a, an increase, if we can just look at those.
Well, if the vote is to give none-
Well, you're right. I mean, it could be-
The vote is to give none, it's, it's moot.
You're right, you're right.
Just to clarify, the magistrate, it was a new position, and then one of the old ones add more up.
Oh, okay, one of the old ones add.
I think, I think we're best served, John, when we get there, let's just go line by line, you know, and, and it is what it is. And, and if we get three votes to do something, we'll move on. If we don't, we'll, it's off, it's off table, we'll move on.
But, John, I mean, you certainly could bring that up as, as a kind of budget policy. And, and I, I mean, to say, in any given year, even if someone's underpaid or whatever, you know, something like that, I mean, I think that, that merits some good discussion. I mean, I do, because maybe we ought to say, you know, even if someone's really underpaid, you can only go up five percent, or whatever your, that was the number you threw out, whatever that number might be. I don't know that that's a bad-
I didn't realize how many we had that were actually big, big bumps. So, I mean, and I know, I mean, there's some positions that are not paid much at all, and to, to give them a ten percent is just, is not even really still a big bump, when you look at one that's $25,000 a year, and they're gonna be then moved up to about seven, twenty-seven thousand. So, I can understand that, but I, I think when, you know, you have a high-level position that's being paid well, more than what, even what we make in our salary, I think that those are the probably ones we need to look out. Short of the judges. I mean, the judge, because you gotta, we need an, we need to add hours for the magistrate, for the magistrate, we need to add hours for the associate judge in court, court at law five. But others that are high, high-ranking positions, like department heads or, or office elected officials, that, that would be something I would say that we need to be careful with.
You should do gradual increases, not a great big bump. It just needs to be gradual.
I think two years ago, Dale, then we do a breakdown of everybody under the $30,000 to see what they would be. It was a twenty, it was a three percent increase. I think we did that two years ago.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it, it kinda gives an idea of where we needed to go, you know? Again, you know, my thing's always bringing people from the bottom up, you know? I don't agree with his big raises either. But I had one question before, you know, you know, you know how I feel about the raises, but, but the, on number sixteen on the, on this paper here-
Yeah.
It says, everything on red, Dale, is things that are, that are coming in?
Going out.
Going out. So, the, the number sixteen, $500,000 going out, road fund, but it says the transfer from the coastal parks, transfer from the road fund.
No, coming in. It's not going out.
Red's going out. Red's, Red's reducing the budget.
Yeah, but I think going out meaning going down.
Going down.
Okay, so the $500,000 is coming, coming in from the road for District Four, so it means we keep $500,000 in our budget, right?
Yes.
So, but it says here coastal park transfer, it says on the budget. Can we just be more specific and say for roads? I mean, I wanna make sure that, they tell me next year that I voted for the wrong thing, and that, and I wanna make sure it goes where it's supposed to go, not for the budget, but for the roads.
Yeah, well, we'll make sure that that's part of it.
I just wanna make sure we clarify that. So, in the road transfer and the road fund budget transfer from Road District Four, that's $500,000. It's also coming from Road Four District, Road Four, right? So, we saving those $500,000.
Yes.
Okay. And the capital projects, the transfers, that, that's the $50,000 that we all had, and we giving it back, right?
Well, that's what's proposed right now.
Right.
That's, that's one of those ones that can be-
Right. Okay. And the special, I don't know what the special revenue fund is.
That's your fund in Fund Thirteen that you use for your precinct road funds.
So, outside-
That's where you're, you get $70,000 a year, $50,000 for you, usually, your own funds, $20,000 for your outside.
Oh, the outside agents.
A total of $70,000 each year from, for a special revenue. So, we gotta split that up. You'll see the two fifty and the one, one hundred together. Those are your, your combined $70,000 per, per commissioner and judge.
Okay. I like to keep my outside agents. Well, you see, you got it separate here. Outside agents in number eighteen. You got outside agents here.
Kinda have to do this to make sure you, we can, you can give back the fifty portion and keep your outside agency, or you give both, or you can keep both. Whatever your case, we, we wanted to make it where it's easy to identify which ones we're talking about.
I'm for keeping it for outside agency. And the other, it says twenty-one coastal parks transfer, special revenue transfer, the coastal parks transfer, $300,000. That stays in our budget. That's not going out.
Correct.
Giving it back, just giving it back.
Last year, we, we, we needed a contingency fund for, for possible losses of the coastal parks, which was not needed, so we don't feel it's needed this year, so we're reducing the transfer by $300,000.
Okay, so that stays in our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, concerns? All right. We've given you a lot of information. When we start on the twelfth, we're gonna start with the oh, one, five above the effective rate budget on the twelfth, and we'll go till you all get tired, hoarse, or we get a budget. One of the three. But we will vote by line. We'll vote by line. Record vote. Record vote. We good?
Basically, you'll just vote on, you'll just vote on if anybody, in other words, it starts here, and if someone wants to make an amendment, they'll just try to-
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you got three votes, we'll move on. If you don't, we'll move on anyway.
Hey, Judge, you got two, zero, eight, one, but I guess-
Zero, eight, one is the effective. The one we got today is what I want you all to concentrate on.
It's point zero, one?
One, five, yeah.
Zero, eight, one. Zero, eight, one, zero, eight, two.
But the, but he, what he's asking is, is the point oh, one, five above the effective time?
I'm sorry, yes. Oh, one, five, five above the effective, which is what the court voted on to have the public hearings on. Got it? Everybody got it? What I need to do, Counselor, go home?
Well, you're on workshop. You can close it, and then you can open it up for the agenda and go from there.
What's the agenda?
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I think the court doesn't wanna take any action on the agenda.
No.
What, I'm not sure about item-
Let me look. I would, I would move-
Four A, or, excuse me, four B. I'm not sure if we wanna discuss that today, or-
Well, we need to set that fees.
I would move to close the budget workshop, Your Honor. I would move to close the budget workshop, Your Honor.
Are you, you don't want to set the fees?
No, no, and then move into the regular agenda.
Okay, all right. I'll close the workshop. We'll go to B, which are the fees, and what schedule are we proposing to use for the fees?
So I handed out a spreadsheet, and it should have one column.
I got it. I got it. Current 75, proposed 125 citations, that one?
Yes.
All right, all the way down. Comments, questions? Now, the 300,000 additional fees was based on us approving the increase, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That was 400.
No, it's 300 in the budget. He, he explained a while ago, he wasn't, we didn't get the numbers we thought we would.
Oh.
We just.
Just showing 300, 1,000, so that's.
It may be 400, but we could only really push the pencil to three.
That's fine.
It could be 500 too, judge, it depends.
Well, it could be 200.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but we got together and I said, no, we're gonna err on the side of caution, if it's a little more, that'll be good. So what I need is a motion, if we're ready, to approve the increased fee schedule effective January 2019 as outlined on the.
So moved.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Discussions? Questions, discussions, all in favor? Aye, post same sign, was that a, a vote of five?
Yes.
Five, okay. We got a new fee schedule proposed in the budget, and you all have just approved it, and that's item B on the agenda. I don't see any reason to go into executive session. Anybody? No? No? We're good? I have 20 minutes to 11. We will meet tomorrow at.
Judge, before you go, just to make a, make it clean, go back to 4A1 and all those, and just take and, take a vote that you're not doing anything. No action, just to make it clean.
4A1.
Move that we take no action on.
4A1 through 21.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, thank you. On the regular agenda, 4A1 through.
21.
We're tabling?
No, we're just making, but motion.